All right, welcome to the meeting of the Blackstone Planning Commission. Got a heavy, the heaviest agenda I can remember. We'll begin with the rezoning request of Sandra M. Tucker Jones.
We have before you tonight a straight rezoning request for a piece of property that would be addressed, it doesn't have a current address, but it would be addressed if a structure were built on it, at 513 Center Street. It's currently a vacant lot, there was a house there at one time. It is adjacent to Ms. Tucker's property, and in order for her to place a manufactured home, a double-wide manufactured home on the property, the current zoning which is R2, does not permit a manufactured home to be placed on it. Currently, you can set a manufactured, double-wide manufactured home, on an individual lot in the R3 zoning district, okay? Single wides still are restricted to mobile home parks, which would also be in R3. All right. Her request here tonight is to rezone the piece of property. In question, I can tell you that it's Notaway County Tax Map Number 50A19-8B, lots 31 and 32, excuse me, and I think it does actually go from Center all the way back to Stoke Street, if I'm not mistaken. That's correct. And the request again is to allow her to place a double-wide manufactured home, which is not currently permissible in the current zoning, which is R2 zoning. And Sandra Jones, the applicant, also lives right next door to the property, and I think the double-wide is intended for a granddaughter to live in. And Ms. Jones also lives in a manufactured home currently on the adjacent property.
So was that rezoned?
You know, I don't remember the history of it. Did we rezone it way back when?
I think so, I believe so.
The zoning has not changed since 1992. How long have you lived in that house?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, so it may have been prior to 92, because the zoning was put in place, this current zoning was put in place in 1992, so it may have been prior to that. She's been there since eighty-five.
Okay, so there's a double-wide right next door.
She lives, the applicant lives in a manufactured home, yes, sir. And this would be a double-wide and it would be on permanent foundation?
Yes.
Is there any comment? I was just gonna ask if there's any comment from the neighborhood, the neighbors, or...
You can open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we need to, yes, we need to open the public hearing. Okay, this is a public hearing on the request of Sandra M. Tucker Jones to rezone lots 31 and 32 from R2 to R3.
If it's of any value to you, I will point out too, that the, if you remember, a gentleman named Gilbert Ruffin, gosh, two or three years ago, came to us, and we rezoned an adjacent parcel just across Center Street, and he had intended, if you remember, he had a nice diagram of some apartments and things like that, and that was zoned R3, and this property is directly across the street from Mr. Ruffin's, which remains R3. We have demolished the house, the house had become untenable, so the town helped by demolishing the home.
Okay, so we're not throwing an R2 into...
That's the point, we're not spot zoning.
An R3, okay, great.
That we've already rezoned a parcel next door.
Any comment in the audience? Barbara?
I make a motion that we approve the request.
Second motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay.
This is a recommendation, so you know, you still gotta go through one more meeting at town council meeting in October, okay? So you'll get another notice to be here.
You'll get another round of letters like I said I promised.
Third Monday in October, this is a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, and thank you all so much.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the rezoning request of Wanda Epps.
This request is much more complex. Kind of something similar, and if you guys, I'll show the zoning map if you guys would like, but if you know where LV Harris's old shop was, on North Main Street, right next to that, or just to the south of that, LV's is the last property in town on that side of the street. Just immediately adjacent to that, there's a very old home owned by a Williams family that lives in New York, okay? It's kind of in disarray, and we're gonna work with them to try to get that place looking a little better. And then there's a vacant lot that's just been cleared, and that is the property that the request is for. Currently, all those properties, except for the property where Frankie Williamson built the duplex, and if you remember, there was a rezoning in order for Frankie to do a duplex two, three years ago, okay? So there's an R2 section there now. She's requesting to rezone her mother's house, that is immediately adjacent to Frankie's duplex, and then the two other parcels which make up the recently cleared area. Not a budding LV, but next to that little house that's in the woods that you can't really see very well. Her request is to put in a modular home, is that correct? Modular home, and R2 zoning would accommodate a modular home as would any other stick-built house and be consistent with the zoning that already was approved from Mr. Williamson.
So the rest of the area is R2?
No, the rest of the area, believe it or not, is business.
Okay.
But it's all houses.
But she wants to make it a more restrictive...
It would be more restrictive, but she has to go through either a conditional use permit or a rezoning in order to put a residence in that business district. Rena Brown's home, that's his own business, across the street, his own business.
It's certainly consistent with the neighborhood.
I think it's consistent with the existing uses of the neighborhood, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tom, I interrupted you.
This is what I want.
Okay. Then we'll open the public hearing on this request. All right, to clarify, this is the public hearing on the rezoning request from Wanda J. Epps. All right. Again, any comment from the, I think I know where everybody's here.
I did get a call today from a lady that has property across the street, and she was just asking the process and why was it going on. And across the street is actually in the county. And so she was, because she wanted to live out there, this lady wanted to live, build something out there, and she was in the county and didn't concern the town, but she was just wanting to know what it was for, so I explained it to her, and that's the only thing that I've heard of from big old property owners.
All right, well, as it is consistent with the housing use in that area, it seems like...
The same kind of business out there was LV's.
Right.
The next one would be Epps Supply or the, what's towing that? I think would be the next nearest business.
Right, and I remember Frankie's hearing, they were very much concerned that it remained residential in that neighborhood.
Well, I think there was some concerns from Ms. Brown and some others at the public hearing that they didn't want the rezoning, but I don't think everybody understood that with business general zoning...
She could have put a service station right there.
Right.
She could have had a 24-hour car wash over there next door.
Yes, yeah, the concern was that they wanted it to remain residential, and I think this would comply with their wishes. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion that we rezone from general business to R2.
All right. Second is, okay, thank you, Barbara. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That goes to the town council also.
I'm gonna turn this map around so you guys can see this, and put it out in front. And I think Jennifer may have had one or two of those zoning maps. I'm gonna face this towards the public commission, and anybody who wants to look at it, they'll get it.
We're ready to address the text amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Better? Can everybody see?
Okay.
Okay, here we go. We have two actual zoning matters before you. The first of which, on this particular request, is an amendment to our existing town's zoning ordinance, which would add as a conditional use computer-based gaming establishments, using the same definition that was used about a year ago, when a similar facility was put in at the Food Lion Shopping Center, I think it's called Player's Vape. Tessie, help me, in July of 2018, she wrote a definition, and I'll read that definition to you. And this is currently included as a conditional use in the SB district, and the purpose of the map is, the SB district are the Food Lion and Walmart shopping centers. Okay? That district was created some time ago when there was an adult novelty store that was proposed or started downtown, and so the town fathers' council at that time decided with, I assume Ken Walton's advice, that you can't say no to everything, but to restrict it in a certain location, okay? That's why this SB, Specialized Business District...
Now, what he's pointing to, for y'all out here in the audience, this is the Walmart and Food Lion shopping center.
This first public hearing that we're having tonight would be to permit the same exact type of activity, which is defined as establishments that offer use of onsite computers for lawfully conducted sweepstakes, games, lotteries, or contests. Such establishments shall require a conditional use permit. And that would be the definition of computer-based, she's got some other notes on here, but that's the definition that's included in the SB district as a conditional use. The applicant, who's here for the conditional use permit, understands that that has to be modified in the BG district, which is all the purple area, which is all the purple areas... Downtown.
Good part of it is downtown.
That's all the purple areas, okay?
Which means if I lay it across the street from here...
Would require action by the planning commission and ultimately by the town council to add that as a use by special exception of conditional use in the BG district. The SB district with a conditional use permit. And the request is to modify the town's zoning ordinance to add that exact definition into the BG district as a conditional use. Please don't break my... You can open the public hearing, do you have any questions?
Can you go over the definition, well, why don't I go ahead and open the public hearing on the text amendment to the zoning ordinance to permit computer-based gaming establishments in the BG district. What was the, can you give us the definition of computer-based gaming establishments one more time, please?
And I can make copies for anybody in attendance through the planning commission. The definition that would be added to the BG districts is establishments that offer use of onsite computers for lawfully conducted sweepstakes, games, lotteries, or contests. Such establishments shall require a conditional use permit. And that's what we'll be discussing following this public hearing, pending the result of the commission vote.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak for this amendment?
I mean, we're doing the same thing, but he basically summed it up for what he wanted to do.
Okay.
Yeah, where do you want to do it?
In the old method.
Oh, that's what, okay, that's where we're in. Yeah, that's where we are.
Right now, we're just considering the text amendment, okay? All right. Not the specific property, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Does this include, like, in the restaurants and in those convenience stores that already have what appears to be that kind of gaming? Or is that a different type?
That is, I think, the same type of machine, and we are currently working with our Commonwealth's Attorney, the state's attorney general, and our police department to determine the validity or lawfulness of those games as well, but it will apply to everything, okay? And I think after tonight, we'll have our marching orders as far as those additional games, and people would have to make application for those as well.
I've just noticed, and that's what I asked.
There's one in Kangaroo, there's one in Slip In, I think maybe two in Slip In, so they are scattered around. The machines are owned by Queen VA, if that makes sense to the folks that are in the business that know about it.
What's the object of these games?
I couldn't, I don't know, maybe these guys can tell you. I've never played one, but maybe these gentlemen could advise you.
It's more like adult entertainment skill. It's basically like, for example, like Bozies, but more of a skill-based game and a skill game statute.
Okay.
Where, can I ask a question? Where do you find the skill-based statute? Where do you find...
Virginia skill game.
Is that in the statute? Have you found something in the statute that alludes to skill games?
Who's that addressed to you?
Tessie.
Okay. I believe that there is the gambling law, which, you know, prohibits the game of cheats. But currently, if I had a specific code section, I'd be glad to go up and look it up where I could get service. But I think that the game of skill is the opposite of the game of cheats. I'm not sure that those exact words that were used in the...
My initial feeling is that there used to be gaming that was done at amusement parks and carnivals. If anybody's as old as I am, they remember going to Virginia Beach to the amusement park, and you could throw a little ball at a group of objects, and you would get a coupon. Anybody remember that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And let's say you spent $20 getting coupons. You could take that $20 you spent in coupons, and you could walk over, and you could present the coupons, and you would get a stuffed animal worth $2.
Sounds like Chuck E. Cheese to me.
And by the way, that is what I believe was used to create the game of skill. That was done for amusements where the actual payout was less than what you would have put into the equipment. In other words, the expectation was not to make money. The expectation is you're gonna lose money. Because if the expectation is to make money, that creates gambling. That's the only thing that creates gambling. Now, if it's strictly an amusement, that's one thing. But I'm not convinced yet that the game of skill is what this is all about, or the amount of money that would be involved in this would not be much, because they would beat the game of skill. Now, I'm not gonna get into the legal part of this any further than that, because I'm not a lawyer. But the problem I have with it is, I've called the attorney general's office, I've called the Commonwealth attorney in Shawesville, who has said this is illegal in Shawesville, and banned it. He is in court now, or will be in court involving this. Called the Commonwealth attorney in Greenville County. I've talked to one of our local general assembly members. Nobody will give you an opinion. The attorney general's office will not give you an opinion on this, not at this stage, they won't do it. They're waiting for the general assembly to act, and that's part of my problem with this. Until somebody gives me better advice, I have difficulty doing this. Somebody's gotta come up with, state's gotta take a stand on this, one way or the other. So I'm just putting that out, because that's my feeling about this.
I have a question.
Can I ask real quick? If you come to the podium, and we record these meetings, and we want to hear from them.
Say your name, if you would, so we have it in the minutes.
My name is Shawesville. And I'm sitting here, I'm listening, and I'm just curious, because you said that you have this in the special district, and it's okay. So how was it okay when you passed it for them to open and do business? But it's not okay now. So you're saying if they were to put in a business that's out at Walmart, Food Lion, and that area, that it's okay? What's the difference?
Different, that's the purpose of zoning, you know, to make it different for different types of thing in different parts of town.
I understand the parts of town, but it's still the same principle.
I'll be very frank, if I had to go back and do it over again, I would say I personally made a big mistake.
Okay, but you've already approved it.
That's correct. And I voted to do that out there, because that area was zoned to accommodate that type of activity, and that is correct. But I do think I made a mistake, and I don't make any bones about it, I think I made an error. Looking back on it, I don't think I would have approached it exactly the same way. I think I would have done a little more analysis. The second thing is, the Commonwealth attorney in Shawesville sent out a press release on June 7th, 2019, which was way after that date. And Plantania made the determination that Queen of Virginia Machines violated Virginia law. He cited two code sections, 18.2-325 and code section 18.2-331. He gave the operators 30 days to remove the devices. He's a constitutional officer of the state, sworn to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia. He made the determination that the machines were gambling devices. And my belief is that we need clarification by the state before we can allow more electronic games. I think we need serious clarification from the state, but I also think in this particular case, the zoning is the issue, not the, I don't think anything else is paramount here, other than zoning.
So if it was that Food Lion or Walmart area, you wouldn't have a problem?
I would personally still have a problem.
Personally, he would have, okay.
And I, by the way, I'll be clear, I'd vote against it in either location. Now, it doesn't mean I carry no weight, but I wouldn't vote for it. The reason is, I still question legality of this.
So...
Not that it's illegal, I'm not saying it is. It may be perfectly legal, I just can't get clarification from anyone in the state. Nobody in the state will tell me that these are legal games, so far.
If it wasn't the, so what if it was the gaming system that is at, currently, that's been approved, that's located at the Food Lion shopping center area? Would that be approved?
It might be approved, but I personally wouldn't vote for it.
How do you feel, Mr. Nash?
I tend to agree with what Mr. Watkins is saying.
How do you feel, Ms. Thompson?
Well, I really don't know, I don't know that much about the machines and how it works. But I have had people come to me with their concern about, they feel like it's gambling, and it's too much gambling coming into this small town.
I'm sorry, so...
McCarthy, that's the name. I didn't have a big problem with it.
Do you know how the other, because they're not here to speak, how do they feel about it?
I can't say.
So this hasn't been discussed amongst the board?
I have not discussed it with anybody.
There's only one other member there.
We're not here to be questioned as commissioners sitting up here tonight.
I'm just trying to get an idea.
And just as a little history to explain to you, I think that there was an adult bookstore that tried to come in our historic business district a few years ago.
And was denied.
I understand that.
And it was denied, and so they decided they would come up with an area in Blackstone where stuff like that could be.
I understand that.
Right, so they moved it out there, and so I feel like that they think that that's the safest place to have the games, is in that district, so, you know, where it's not like in our historic business district, or all over town in general, which I think is why that came up.
I understand, because the area that they're looking at is not even a mile down the street from there. And in fact, the police sit in that parking lot nine times out of ten each time I've come to Blackstone, they're there, so I don't feel that that's a safety issue or anything like that.
Is this the medical center?
Yes. I'm just trying to get some information, so we'll know, so they will know.
Well, they're not, there are residences on South Main Street, there are no residences out where Food Lion and Walmart are.
Right across the street?
Well, they're in a business district out there.
This is business?
It's zoned differently out there, the zoning at the shopping center is less restrictive than what the, they showed you the map of where the purple is and where the yellow is, and that's the purpose of zoning.
So I'm just asking, because we're here to have a permit, to see if it would be approved.
That's what we're gonna get to.
Okay. I'm just asking, if I should know, because...
Yeah, and by the way, I know where y'all are coming from, and I appreciate that.
I mean, it's already in place in one location, so I'm just trying to figure...
And I fully, and I personally appreciate that, I know where you're coming from on this. And my difficulty is probably a little different than some of the others, I just have a little different viewpoint.
I understand that. So I'm just wondering, so we'll know what is what.
I think the main thing here is the restrictive zoning, and...
So how do you grow and how do you get things bought into the county or the town, if we don't discuss it, and is there room for it to be changed?
Where's Phillip? Yes.
And I'm gonna ask one more time, if the gaming that is already in place
was somewhere else different, or was included here, would that or would that not change things?
Say that one more time.
The gaming systems that are already in place, that are located at the Food Lion, that have already been approved by everyone, and has been in place for almost a year now. If they were to be used in other locations, would that change things?
For your knowledge, and I don't know if you know this, but as soon as we finish with these two public hearings for this gaming, there's a third request for another gaming facility to be located at the Walmart shopping center, which is in. So if you wait and see what those guys have to say, that will tell you.
So basically, what I'm, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding correctly. If it was in a different location, other than where it's looking at, then you would have a problem with it?
We would have a difficulty at this point if it was anywhere other than the shopping center. In other words, if it was anywhere downtown, or any other location that's business general right now, it would be problematic. Does that make sense? In other words, any other area other than the shopping center is not designated for.
The change is not happening, is what you're saying?
Well, right now, unless somebody else changes it, then, right...
The body that's here tonight is an advisory board, town council has final say on it.
Right, they'll do whatever they want to.
That was made very clear to us a few years ago, when we were against something. Doug Golden sat up here and said, "Well, we don't care what the planning commission says." I remember that very distinctly.
So when do they meet?
Depending on the disposition of the matter, we were required by state code to hold a public hearing at the council level, and we have certain advertising requirements. Our expectation, if their reaction tonight, that that public hearing would be advertised for the third Monday in October, which is...
The 21st, I believe.
That would be our logical next meeting, if they make a recommendation tonight.
You asked about, you know, I was very happy with, the gaming machines didn't bother me out at the shopping center. I thought that was a fine place for them. I am dramatically less excited to have them spread through the neighborhoods.
But it's not heavily a neighborhood, it's right on the main street, right?
Yeah, I agree.
I understand that, but it is more residential. That's even downtown. All right, are there other people who wish to comment?
Yeah.
I'm Paul Simpler. I live at 925 South Main Street, and I think one of the proposed sites is right across the street from me. And I've seen the thing out at Food, Walmart, and I see all the, is it Food Lion right now?
Food Lion Shopping Center.
Oh, Food Lion, well, wherever it is, yeah. And all the flashing lights, and I'm right across the street, there are bright lights over there now. And I don't object to the bright lights, but flashing lights, increased traffic across there would be a problem for me. And I don't know, what is the age of the people that would be over there? From five to fifteen, 105, or what? Are there any restrictions on the gaming machines?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one and over.
Okay.
I can read to you, because this is really the precedent that we have, and I can read everybody in the audience, the conditions that were placed on the Players' Bay down at Food Lion Shopping Center, and I think you're talking about that vape shop, which is the blinking lights over at Walmart.
Okay, okay, yeah.
These are the conditions that were approved by town council, with Players' Bay. It says, "The establishment shall close no later than 11 o'clock. The establishment shall provide security satisfactory to the police department at the establishment's expense on Friday and Saturday evenings from dusk until closing. The 90-day review upon opening business will be on town council's agenda on... A 90-day review upon opening business will be on town council's agenda on October, and abide by the state code that governs computer-based gaming, or it may result in a revocation of the conditional permit. It's gotta be legal by state standards," and that's what Mr. Watkins was saying. He hadn't gotten a legal review. We talked about that in the office.
Yeah, I'll explain it to everybody in the little, while once you get that.
Well, there's a little second issue I have too, and I might as well bring it up, because you just brought it up. And that is, the gaming machines in Virginia are not regulated or taxed by anyone. There is no regulation on this equipment. And that, I mean, if we were in, in Vegas, the gaming commission would come in and check the machines. State of Virginia, no one's checking anything. And by the way, it's also not being taxed at this point, and if you were in Nevada, these games would be taxed.
Well, you do make them fill out forms, tax form if they do win, anything more than $5.99, they fill out form.
So what you're saying is, you anticipate them winning?
I mean, they can.
Well, can I ask the next question? How do y'all make money on this?
Well, you, you promote your products up there, and then they get a promotion to play the game. And after they play the game, they can, they have a chance to have, they have like, well, the way it's set up, it's like, for example, if you have like cherry, cherry, and cherry falls here, you can move it up, and you can match the cherries and you win, or you can accidentally press it down, you can make yourself winner rules. Either you match the cherries and you win the amount that it gives you, or you can change the, it's an up and down arrow.
It's like Nut Sisters.
Yeah, I try to read that. Like you can, you can move, move your cherry up to match it, where it'll give you your prize.
So in other words, you're not using your brain, you, you will lose even if you win.
And there's same type games that are as the ones that you've currently approved already.
So, if somebody's skilled enough at this, should they ever lose?
Can they lose?
Should they ever lose?
No, they will not.
They will never lose if they're...
Because the games are made according to the code of Virginia, whatever the ABC guy reviewed, but there are some...
Wait, wait, wait one second, you said who, ABC?
Gentlemen, we're gonna come and explain it exactly what it is about. And maybe it might help you in understanding more.
Have you been to Players' Bay in Blackstone?
No, but I sent somebody out there to play for me.
How you like that?
How'd they do?
He lost my $5.
I lost $10 the other day.
But I, I will say this, I think the expectation of winning is, is problematic. Because that's what, that creates gambling. In other words, if you go into something and do not expect to win money, there's no gambling involved. But if you go into the expectation of winning, I think it's a problem.
It's like for the lottery, people they play, different numbers.
Right.
And someone, they put numbers, and they get the money from that, they do, they make mistakes, they're not the same numbers.
But I think most of us going into the lottery, and by the way, what did the state make last year on the lottery? Not small change. So that game is rigged, and it's rigged in favor of the state of Virginia big time. Uh, I wouldn't use that as a comparison.
But it's legal.
But it is legal, but it's only legal because the state passed it. Anyway, back to...
Yeah, let me finish on that, what you have to do in a technical tone.
Right.
I guess another question is, would the, that establishment negatively impact our property values in the area? Since we live right across the street, and I think it could impact. I know we lost the house down there, and it impacted us in a positive way, I think, even though it was a negative effect originally, but a positive effect later. And we are concerned about the times of operation, and you say from dusk till 11 o'clock at night?
Those were the terms, excuse me, those were the terms that were placed on the existing facility.
Oh, okay, so they could close at 9:00, really?
They could close earlier than that, and they could stay open later than that, if it were the pleasure of the town council. But those are specific conditions for the existing facility?
Well, I'm personally opposed to it because of the excess, I think, excess traffic in the area.
Or because of lights?
Well, the lights and traffic, people coming in and out.
Traffic is there because of Walmart and Food Lion, I guess.
Oh, it's a different location?
Right next to his house, just on the wall.
Okay, yeah, there's a church, and a nursing home, and a rest home, right in that area. And there's a, a, another medical facility just down the street, and then a dentist office. And there are two homes there, and one of them is mine, and one's a rental property. And then down the street, there are more homes.
And that's across from Food Lion as well.
This is not even close to Food Lion, this is, this is 925 South Main Street.
All right.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, you wish to describe, please?
Sorry, I think it's interesting.
So...
Would you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Hurs Patel, and we were applying to, we were planning to do the same thing as these gentlemen are doing, but we are trying to do the legit way. We are not gonna use, something is illegal. And according to the law of Virginia, the gambling is that, where is the chance involved, and where the people win money. So the skill games designed for Virginia are totally different when you compare parallelly law and the game. So in that, you place the wager, like you bet the money, that's the one thing. So when you bet the money, you get a puzzle. Either it's depend on the tic-tac-toe base, or...
How much can you wager?
Depends, it's different, it's vary from 40 cent to $5, $10, whatever you want. That's your personal choice.
Okay.
Right? So according to that, whatever you put wager, the puzzle comes to you. And then you have to solve the puzzle to win money. Or if you, if you don't get the right puzzle, like which gonna lose. But behind that puzzle, there is an external game. If you play that, that's a on memory game. You have to follow the steps, if you do it right way, you get the money back, whatever you played, plus 10% of whatever was the wager, like the bet. So player can always win money. So which is, which is make the games legal, when you compare to the gambling. And that is the only reason, although Attorney General and everybody is silent. But the thing is that, the games are not regulated. And according to my knowledge, in January, Virginia Lottery is having a voting on the games, since they are losing money. So by time next year, somewhere in June, July, they will get connected to the lottery. Another thing, there is some, some games are illegal, and that's all over. And another thing, if you all know about the Roses, do you ever been to Roses in Richmond? Did anyone read the Richmond Times-Paper?
It's 30,000 square feet facility.
Yes, and they are doing game on the historical horse racing or something.
Horse racing site.
Yeah, they are, they have the same skill games machines and stuff, and they generated some like 70 million revenue or something?
72 million last one.
And nobody had any problem.
State of Virginia, though, General Assembly addressed that issue, and made horse betting like that legal in the state of Virginia, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
They did, they specifically made that activity legal.
It's not horse game, though, it's the same game.
Yeah, it's same game.
But they made that specific group of games legal. Problem I have in this case is...
It's not regulated, but it's not illegal either. So...
Do you think they're regulated?
No, they are not regulated, but it's not illegal, the thing is that. And that is the reason everybody's silent, it's all over. At least, I would say about 7,000 locations in Virginia. And if it's illegal, you know what's gonna happen, it's been like almost a year and about 18 months. If it's illegal, they're not, they're not gonna let it, just run it away, you know?
But can I ask this, why do you think the Attorney General won't give an opinion on it?
Because right now it's not regulated, so they are trying to see how they can regulate their games. That is the only reason they are not giving the opinion. The Attorney General can say the same thing too, right, if it's illegal, they will say it's illegal.
Let me ask this, why did the Commonwealth Attorney in Charlesville say it is illegal?
Well, Charlesville is bringing a different gaming style there, that's why they wanna get rid of those and bring in something like Roses. They are bringing, they're teaming up with it.
Whatever they had was different game, and that's why they called it.
He's the Commonwealth Attorney there, and basically he said for all games, to go out of Charlesville. Now, he's being sued by the Queen of Virginia, which is fine. So it will be in the courts, we'll get a court decision eventually. But I also think the General Assembly will act, because Queen of Virginia has already given more than $224,000 to the General Assembly members. So there will be some action at some point on this. And why did they give them $224,000?
Am I doing charity, you know, Virginia Lottery is doing the same way.
How we know what they're doing, but anyway.
Yeah, and that's, that's up to them, that's their corporation, you know? We don't ask question to Virginia Lottery, right?
Right. Well, my feeling there again is, it's a zoning issue at this point, and...
And another question, is there anywhere we can get the list of the business?
Listed in the...
In the specific zone, like what is general business, and what is the specialized business?
See Mr. Van Orbeek.
Yeah, sure.
I can make a copy for anybody here tonight, if you'd like to, but it's also on the town's website. And you can download it yourself, and go into the planning tab, and then zoning ordinance, and you can copy any page you'd like.
So is the same business what we are talking about is listed on that list, on the historical side?
No.
So we can do it?
No, it's listed on the specialized business district, not a historic district.
So it's listed on the specialized business listing about the game zone, can I check this, please?
Certainly. Where are we now, last?
Well, I'm, we're still on the text amendment, which I'm gonna see if anybody else has any. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment on the text amendment during this text? There is not, okay. At this point, we're gonna consider the issue of whether we're going to recommend the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. My personal feeling is, as I said earlier, I don't have any big problems with the games themselves. However, I'm very happy with them out in the specialized business district, and I'm not in favor of expanding it into the general business section. Any question, for questions, comments, does anybody feel inspired to make a motion?
I don't think we ought to make any change to it at this point.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second to that motion? All right, all in, in this case, a vote of aye will, we will not make the change to the zoning ordinance. And, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. At this point, we have declined to make the change to the zoning ordinance, which mutes...
Mutes the second part of the request, which is actually a request for the conditional use permit.
Right.
But if you did not change the amendment, or did not amend the ordinance, there is really nothing to apply for.
That's correct. Now, so at this point, we have the request from 804 Falls Street for the operation of a computer-based gaming establish, establishment within the specialized business zone.
Walmart shopping center is correct.
Okay.
And that'll be the, the next public hearing.
Okay.
There's a request from an individual to operate the exact same type of gaming establishment, and it's at 1441 South Main Street, it's one of the suites adjacent to the Walmart shopping center in the, in the strip center. It's a computer-based gaming establishment. I must admit, I don't know where the name 804 Falls Street LLC came from, but I've had more calls about that than anything else. Is he gonna put it on Falls Street, so you may address that if you get a chance to talk about it.
Do you wanna clarify then, what is that?
I can. There was a two-part request that you guys made, there were actually two public hearings scheduled, the first of which was change the rules, and they got turned down. So by sheer fact that that was turned down, the second public hearing is a new point, because you didn't have anything to apply for. And you had to change the rule, and then you make an application based on the new rule, and that was turned down. And that, town council will still vote on this, and it'll be back on the agenda on the 21st of October, I assume.
And I will send out, anyone that got letters, they will get the same letters again, letting the adjoining property owners know when we'll have another public hearing like this, and council will make the final decision. They make the recommendation, council has the final say.
Good, all good? All right. The applicant is here, his, the application is at 804 Falls Street LLC. Again, it's a portion of the shopping center out there at the Walmart shopping center, and it is in the specialized business district, and requested for a conditional use permit to operate. And I think he did have some conditions included, and I think they mirror very closely. Borrow some glasses here.
Do they mirror them exactly?
"The establishment shall close no later than 11 p.m." I'm gonna keep my back to the camera, so I can't see where your glasses are. "Establishment shall close no later than 11 p.m. Establishment shall provide security satisfactory to the police department at the establishment's expense on Friday and Saturday evenings from dusk until closing. A 90-day review upon opening the business, and abide by the state code that governs computer-based gaming, or it may result in a revocation of the conditional use permit. If it's not verbatim, it might darn close." And for General... And Mr. Marcus Edwards is here, if you have any questions, this gentleman in the blue shirt is here to make presentation.
Open the public hearing?
Yes, we will open the public hearing now, on the request of 804 Falls Street.
I'm Marcus Edwards, resident of Nottaway County, representing 804 Falls Street LLC. It was a, I planned to purchase a, a house over on Falls Street, and we had a few issues with some squatters and some different things, so that kinda fell through at that time. But I did, I haven't done anything with the LLC, and so that's what I used. We ask that you approve our request for a conditional use permit, computer-based gaming establishment in the specialized business zoning district at Blackstone Square. If approved, we will offer an option, it will offer an option for consumers who wish to stay in Blackstone to enjoy the computer gaze, gaming as, along with the one that's already established. Approval will also allow us to employ a handful of qualified individuals from our local community. Thank you.
This also be vaping, and, no, this is just, okay, it's not, not associated with a vaping business, okay.
We are offering the same proffers as the, the company that's already in operation at the other shopping center.
Where will your machines come from, who's your supplier?
It's a, that's a, we do have a supplier, that's not something I'd like to discuss. It's not Queen of Virginia.
Okay. Are the, these machines obviously being used somewhere else in the state?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
You said it's not Queen.
It's not.
Other questions?
Anybody else wants to speak in favor?
Yes, okay, you don't, is there anybody else wish to address the public hearing?
I personally am opposed to this.
Opposed to what, exactly?
To granting this business to, it's, it's to come to... Uh, granting this business to, it's, it's to come to the shopping center.
Right.
What are we gonna be known for, the, uh, gaming capital of, of whatever? I wanna read you something that I had, that was, uh, I asked for.
I'm sorry, uh, did you state your name also?
My name's Louise Russell.
Right, excellent.
Yes. The gentleman that, uh, the attorney for the Players Vape made a statement that, um, I'm gonna try to read. Mr. G said that they were getting customers from all over, and the problem is that there are other facilities that are open until two A.M. And some are open all night, so people will leave one and go to the other place in order to get seating at other facilities. Now, they did not come back yet to ask for their hours to be extended. But can you picture people going to Players Vape and playing, and then they leave and they go to Food Line or whatever other parking lot it is and play some more? As far as I'm concerned, we are feeding an addiction, a gambling addiction, or whatever you wanna call it. I'm opposed to it, I'm strongly opposed to it.
Anybody else wished to address the public hearing?
Just wanted to point out to you, if you didn't already know, Tessie Bacon, the town's attorney, is here. And if you have any questions specific to the legality, not necessarily the machines, but of the zoning and the zoning request, I think Tessie would be certainly able to speak if you have a question.
All right. How would you like to proceed? Anything you would like to say, address to the group?
You and I will disagree on this one, but that's okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until we get better information from the state of Virginia.
Let me just add, I think, uh, just so you know, I do think that there's a termination period for tabling, and I think it may be ninety days, if I'm not mistaken. Anything tabled for more than ninety days will be, um, a tax that passed to the council. It doesn't come with a recommendation at that point. So, I think there is a period of time that you can, uh, table in the state of Virginia a zoning request at Planning Commission level. Just so you know.
All right. Did you make that in the form of a motion?
I made that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
May not get a second.
May not get a second, okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think Marcus has a question.
Okay. All right. My opinion is, we briefly set a precedent, and I previously, at this meeting, stated that we would put these into the specialized business district. And therefore, I would request a motion that we recommend the, uh, the request.
Is that a motion?
Am I allowed to make motions?
Sure.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Bacon? Now I've got a question for you.
If both motions die at this point, you know, the Planning Commission acts for its motions, so it would effectively just be tabled until someone made a motion further. And then, of course, it would be subject to the whole other things.
All right.
See, what I really wanted to do is recommend that we table it, and then come back to council and recommend a moratorium until we have better information. Only because I'm not convinced that the first we did-
What information do you think is available?
I think either, either the General Assembly will act, or the Attorney General will render an opinion, or the court case in Albemarle County will be settled. One of those three would be advantageous.
Do you think that that will happen within the ninety days?
Don't know, that's why I'm asking the Town Council to give us a moratorium on this until it is, in other words, table it for now. But then ask for a moratorium to give us time to get some of the opinions answered.
Time being of the essence, uh, the legal system is, is very, very slow. I feel like, uh, that we've went through the, the right steps to, to get this thing. We're in the right zoning, we're, we've got the exact same proffered as, as the company that's already doing it. I'm probably, I would probably lose the, the opportunity to, to have this business, and even if it only went to ninety days. So, I would ask that, that you reopen that motion and maybe get a second, let the Town Council decide.
All right. Well, my motion is still on the table, I believe, so... And as we've stated before, it's only a recommendation to the council, not the final decision.
I'll, I'll second the motion and let it go to the council and they can make the final decision.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Are you aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
It is sleep.
Ms., are you abstaining, or?
I'm abstaining, I don't have an opinion on it.
Okay.
I'm not well enough informed to, to, to make a recommendation.
All right. Very well, then, that, that recommendation will be made to the council, two to one, so...
I hate, I hate to recommend or deny something, I don't feel like I have proper knowledge to render an opinion on.
Fair enough.
He's right there.
I think everybody will do what they think.
The motion has had two one one, so that will go along with the Town Council. Tessie's gonna make sure that we don't have the full membership here. That two votes will be the equivalent of a majority in the corner. So, I think it will stand. Tessie's just gonna double-check to make sure two votes is enough.
All right. Then that will close the public hearings.
I don't think there's anything else to come before that. Commission tonight?
Then I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.